Good afternoon, everybody. It is Monday, November 20th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'll call to order the Free Town Border Select meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. We're gonna go a little bit out of order today due to the very enthusiastic crowd we have here and also our long agenda. So I'm gonna kick it over to Selectmen Loebz and ready to go.
All right. Well, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is Selectman Loebz, and we're gonna be kicking off the Personnel Board. Item number 15, and that's to congratulate Officer Philip J. Pine as a recipient of the Life Saving Award. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. Chief Rose, Free Town Police Department. Thank you for giving me the time to speak today. But I'm here to describe to you a life-saving incident that took place in our community. So we're here to honor the officer that was involved in that, you know, heroic incident that saved the life of an individual. But I'm also here to say that was here to celebrate a second chance of life with the survivor, Mr. Gonzales, who's here in the front row. I think most of his friends and family call him Rick. So if I'd like to call you Rick as well. So so on November 1st, about 7:30 in the morning, the communications center received a 911 call regarding an incident that someone was in dire need of a medical emergency. And the dispatcher, Tim Dwyer, did his proper response of dispatching police and fire to a location at Bradford Steel. And immediately continued with his emergency medical dispatching and evaluated that the person was in need of cardiac arrest and resuscitation. So during that process, the dispatcher was able to give directions and instructions to the caller and to assist the civilians that were around Rick when he was in dire need of life-saving. As soon as the first officer arrived on scene, and that was Officer Philip Pine, he immediately got to the scene with his defibrillator and other medical equipment, hooked him up with a defibrillator. And if you've ever seen how a defibrillator works, the pads go on, you turn it on. A lot of instructions are dictated through the defibrillator. In that situation, the defibrillator announced that a shock was needed. A shock was provided. CPR was continued shortly after that. Free Town paramedics arrived on scene. Everything is happening so quickly, so fast, that the need for Rick to get on a stretcher into the ambulance and into the hospital was crucial. So all these components that I described to you today between the initial call, the dispatcher and his work, the officer responding, the defibrillator being deployed, and the paramedics is nothing but incredible and needs to be honored and recognized today. So Officer Pine, if you could come up over here and stand next to me, I really appreciate it. So I'd like to read to you a life-saving award commendation that I wrote for Officer Pine. And just to give you an idea, the incident took place on the first. On the second, it was reviewed by a committee, a part of the department. And it was acknowledged that it definitely fit the criteria of the award. And we responded pretty quickly with a roll call meeting with the officers and dispatches that are available. And this commendation was read. And it states, "I am writing to you, Officer Pine, for exceptional dedication and extraordinary efforts which have led to your well-deserved recognition and the receipt of the Life Saving Award in accordance with the department's criteria. The Life Saving Award is a testament to the remarkable actions of sworn officers who, in adherence to the department's guidelines, saves a life through means such as CPR, defibrillator usage, or providing other life-saving first aid. On November 1st, approximately 7:30, you, Officer Pine, while during a routine traffic stop, received an urgent call for assistance in response to a medical emergency involving an individual experiencing cardiac arrest. Without hesitation, you swiftly cleared your traffic stop, proceeded to the location of the medical emergency. Upon your arrival, you displayed remarkable professionalism in unwavering composure under intense pressure. You promptly deployed the department defibrillator and administered a life-saving shock to the individual. You then continued to provide CPR until arrival of Free Town paramedics. During this transition, you seamlessly supported the paramedics in loading the patient into the ambulance, ensuring the essential medical care was maintained. A thorough review of the incident underscored the exemplary nature of your actions as they fully conform to the stringent criteria set forth for the Life Saving Award. Your quick thinking, decisive action, and life-saving performance were nothing short of commendable. Your recognition not only serves as a token of appreciation for your heroic intervention, but also as an inspiration to all members of our organization and the broader the community. Your unwavering dedication to upholding the values of our department and the trust you instill within the community are evident in your actions. I hope that you, Officer Pine, can accept our heartfelt gratitude for your exceptional contributions to the public safety. Sincerely, Scott M. Rose, Chief of Police." Thank you very much. Nothing but so proud. I can't, I can't say much more about that. That Rick is here with his coworkers. He's able to celebrate the holidays with his family and friends. And I'm so glad it turned out the way it did. So congratulations, Rick, okay? Rick, would you like to say anything towards?
Officer Pine, I thank you very much for saving my life. If it wasn't for the, my work family and for you, I probably would not be here.
God almighty.
Thank you.
And it was you that just said, you just walked in just total professional.
So forgive me, folks. This is Mr. Jackson. He's the owner of Bradford Steel. And from what I understand, he's worked alongside Rick for many years. And to see your fellow friend and coworker go down is definitely a moment that you probably never forget. But we're here to celebrate that today. Okay, so congrats. Looking forward to seeing you a lot longer.
Yes.
Keep that health in check, okay? And I'd like to turn it over back to Carlos.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Officer Pine, if you could give us a few more minutes of your time.
No worries.
True professional, not even a bead of sweat coming off of him. Good job. So we don't get many of these chances very often to present an officer like Officer Pine such a great award such as this. There are times that in a police officer's life, just like the military, we have these trainings that we always think to ourselves, I will never use this in my life. Right? One of these things, like life-saving techniques, is one of those trainings that we never want to use. But I'm sure glad we have someone like Officer Pine and the rest of the Free Town Police Department that have stepped up, have taken this training, have taken it seriously. And the results speak for themselves. We have an outstanding individual and a group of people here celebrating a man's life. So again, Officer Pine, you did an awesome job. Thank you. That said, the Board of Selectmen have a little something for you. They read as such. "To Officer Philip J. Pine, we, the Selectmen of the Town of Free Town, hereby congratulate you on being a recipient of the Life Saving Award. Your heroic actions have certainly made a life-changing impact, not only on the resident you save, but the entire community. It is employees such as yourself that truly make Free Town an amazing place to live and work." Again, congratulations, Officer Pine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
You're not obligated to stay for the rest of the meeting, folks. All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations.
We have plenty of assistance, but we will use it twice.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Love to hear that.
All right.
So we'll give them a few minutes as they exit, so we can, there's another presentation we have. And I think most of us know who that is. So just give us a few minutes while the room clears and we'll get going again. Before I begin, Danny, did you want to say anything? Okay, perfect. I'll start it and then you can head up on it, all right? All right. How's everybody doing tonight? Ready to keep going? All right. So moving on to the agenda today, we have item number 16. And that's to congratulate Sarah Ashley for exemplary service and dedication to the student of Veterans of American Chapter at Bristol County College. Danny, a few minutes? Bristol Community College.
Thank you to the Selectmen on the board. It's really hard to follow that. But we just had Veterans Day and we're going into Thanksgiving. So showing, continue to show some gratitude to everyone that makes communities what they are. A strong nation starts with strong communities. So really glad that Free Town was able to kind of jump through a lot of hoops to recognize Sarah. I've been at Bristol Community College for around three years. Robin's been there, a little over 25. And we talk amongst ourselves and we got some Bristol veterans here tonight. And amongst ourselves, it's really hard to look back and find a time that we didn't have a team of student veterans that came from all different communities, coming together and really bringing out the best of each other the way that they are doing in the 2023 fall semester. So that's a testament to all the Bristol students and especially Sarah for coming onto the team. It's not really easy to go into a environment that you may not really be comfortable in. But everyone has value and everyone just brings the best out of each other. So Sarah's been on the team just one semester, right? And leaps and bounds, the whole college is really leading all the other universities and institutions of higher learning because of our student veteran culture. And that's because the veterans that come in like Sarah. So I'm just really appreciative of the time and the opportunity to recognize one of your own, one of the local residents. And instead of focusing too much on the national politics, just coming into local communities and recognizing the great talent, the great people that you have in your communities. So thank you. And I really appreciate everything that you do, Sarah, too.
Hi, folks, it's me again. How's everybody, how's everybody doing tonight? Well, Sarah, we have a little certificate for you as well. You had a pretty good outpouring from your community and like-minded individuals that recognize a veteran. As a veteran myself, Marine Corps, I know we have some Marines in here, so happy birthday. Happy Veterans Day to those that are here. Thank you for your service. There are times where you're a veteran, well, you're still in the service, I should say, that you don't think of what you do when you get out, right? Sometimes it's one of those decisions you make on the fly, based on your military occupancy, which is your MOS. It could be on family, it could be on many things. Sarah decided to get into the medical field in a sense, right? The medical community for veterans. And her being up here gives me great pride. I got to talk to her a few minutes, talk to family, some, again, some other veterans. And this is the kind of thing we need more for, in this, in this community, right? She lives on the Bay Shores, still there, right? In the Sonnet, which is the capital of Free Town, from what I'm told. But this is really a big deal, right? It's veterans giving back to veterans. She understands what veterans need. She understands how to get things done. And this is just a step in her future, a step in her future and a great milestone for the veteran community. So I want to thank you for that. So congratulations on that achievement. Congratulations to all veterans for being here with us. And of course, all the other amazing folks from your auxiliary units and everything else. So we do have a little certificate, and this is what it says, Sarah. "The Town of Free Town bestows a certificate of grateful appreciation to Sarah Ashley of the Sonnet in honor and recognition of your exemplary service and dedication to the student of Veterans of American Chapter at Bristol Community College during the fall 2023 semester, while representing Bristol in the Town of Free Town factor nonverba. Presented in Town of Free Town this day of 20th of November, 2023." Congratulations. Thank you, everyone that's out here supporting her. Make sure you congratulate her every chance you get.
All right. So now we move on to much less fun stuff. Okay, so I guess I'll kick it off to Agenda Item 1?
Yep.
All right, so this is discussion about whether approved but not released. Thank you. So this is for Executive Session Minutes from 11/6/2023. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release the Executive Session Minutes from 11/6/2023.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And now we have open session minutes from 11/6/2023. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve open session minutes from 11/6/2023.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we are gonna kick it over to the Library Building Committee, sorry, the Library Building Program Study. So Nicole, we have a presentation.
It's actually Mary Brainy's.
Mary Brainy, okay, yep, so.
Let's open the meeting.
Oh, yeah. The trustees just got over.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Am I in the way? I feel like I'm in the way.
I don't know if we're gonna, I just want to have it just in case.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Brainy. I am the building consultant that worked on writing the building program for the Free Town Public Libraries. And I'll talk a little bit about the process. I know that I'm, that if you've taken the time to read it, you see that it was not, it's not a short document. It's, it's got some detail. And so the way that we do these things, the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners puts out a grant opportunity, a construction grant every certain number of years. This time it's been about eight or nine years. And one of the components that is required for the grant application is this building program. Building program is essentially a letter to an architect that describes the needs of the community in terms of not only program space, but also square footage that's required to carry out the things that have been identified. In order to do this, we had a number of public, we had two public forums and we had a number of focus groups that, a couple of them met actually here that were well-attended. There was a survey up on the town website and the paper copy is available to gather the input from the town. Then there are also the standards that are sort of best practices based on population in terms of number of seats, number of volumes, size of space. Then we look at the other amenities available in town that the library needs. Obviously, the library needs, we know that your library needs restrooms. That's a little kind of a given and running water, hot running water, running water and hot running water. Then we look at some of the things, because the building program is essentially site-neutral. However, given the fact that neither of your buildings are in locations where they can stay, it really is site-neutral. It means these are the parameters and then, you know, you can go and find a site. Once all those things are identified, we have some charts and spreadsheets that we can plug all the information into in terms of determining square footage. And it's all, the seating, the shelving is just flat out based on how many square feet you need for each, you know, to provide for chairs and tables and shelving. Some of the other decisions are a little bit more objective. How many do you need, small study rooms, medium study rooms, slash meeting rooms, a big auditorium, those kinds of things go into it as well. And then, you know, right now, people are also asking for outdoor space because of what we've just been through, because of COVID. And, you know, it just gives more options for the, for the performance. So that's essentially, those are all the elements that went into the building and into determining what was going to be recommended in the building program. The, your big, your big needs, I mean, your spaces is both, both your spaces are far less than adequate, shall we say? And so that, and again, not having, I mean, not having parking is tricky. People may or may not have parking. But not having running water. And even though you can, even though your buildings have ramps to get into them, you can't really move around in them, you know, particularly well with what, with what you have. Your collections are small based on the size of space available. You don't have very many seats at all. Four seats at a table, six seats at a table at the white for adults and the computers, the four computers that are there, or the computers that are there, the town, the employees have to share with the public. There's no private meeting space for administration or for working with patrons and things like that. No program space, obviously. And the children only have a limited number of seats as well. So those are very strong recommendations for being able to increase the space. If you have any answer, any questions or comments or anything that you, that you may have?
Sure, I'll start it off. A little loud. All right, so thank you for coming here and being with us tonight to answer any questions that we may have, whether it's this board or anybody else in the crowd. So thank you for the work that the Library Committee has done to put this together, to present it to us. So for those at home, watching from home or even here, they might not have seen the report. Like you've said, it's pretty extensive and it is. We perused it this weekend and it was good reading. So what was the recommendation that the, that study provided?
So the recommendation is approximately 14,000, 14,248 gross square feet. Now gross square feet includes, so the net square footage is just under 11,000. And then the factor for the gross square feet includes things like restrooms, corridor space, storage, things like that.
Thank you. So 14,000 square feet, for reference, the first floor of this police station is approximately 12,000 square feet. So for those keeping count of square footage and everything else. And that 14,000 square feet, what are the things that, I know you mentioned some outdoor space, private meeting areas. I believe the study also talked about private rooms, things like that, right? What else is in that study as far, again, for the people that haven't read the report, trying to give them a background of what you have?
One large element is a large auditorium program room space that would accommodate other town needs beyond the library needs. So that, that, that takes up probably, it probably accounts for a couple thousand square feet.
Yeah, no, no, when I saw that, I was actually quite happy looking at that because one of the things we, any building that we build, we always look at elections and how do we get elections out of schools? And that'd be a good way, right? So that's, that was a plus that I saw that I enjoyed. Did the study, again, for those at home, did the study produce numbers as far as figures? As far as is it gonna, you know, $300 square foot as far as building a new building at 14,000 square feet? What was the, I didn't see the estimate in that, in that proposal as far as.
The cost estimate? Yeah, that doesn't come yet. What happens now is the grant, and you've already, you've already met all the criteria for applying for the grant. So when the grant proposal goes in, this is for the planning and design phase. And so the planning at the, if the grant is awarded, then the next phase starts and that's when an architect gets involved, structural engineer, all the engineering, all those kinds of studies get involved. You will have picked a site, so any work that needs to be done with that, with site work and so on, that's when that happens. And that's when you get hard estimates. So the planning and design grant gives you the capability to figure out the total cost. And, and it will break it down, so you'll have some options in terms of site work. I know you have some wetlands around here and things like that.
Sure, yeah.
And so what can and can't be done.
Now, one of the things that I kept looking at, was it 40% or 50% that the grant covers as far as building costs? It was in that ballpark, am I correct on that assumption?
It's in that, so they cover, they've been covering around 45% of what they term eligible costs. And the eligible costs do not include furniture, furniture and landscaping. But there are plenty of other resources for many, many towns to do fundraising for furnishings and landscaping, or the town can just pay for it, I mean, that's, you know.
So it'd be 45% of whatever the final cost is, right?
Not of the total project cost, of the total eligible project cost. Right.
Thank you. That's a key word.
Yes, it is.
Appreciate that.
Yes, it is.
Because landscaping does cost money as well. So there's all the furnishing and everything else. So you said that the study provided a 14,000 square foot recommendation based on size and need of the town. Now, I'm sure that somewhere along the line, discussion was had with the committee and yourself that currently the plans are for a joint building between the Council of Aging and Library. Does this grant, all right, allow for mixed use, one building of one?
It does, but it's prorated.
Okay, and what does that mean exactly for those that are watching?
They look at the total, what parts are common, what parts are individual. And they, you know, they, they do the math based, based on that. It also has a couple caveats, though, that there are certain elements that have to remain as library elements. There has to be sufficient parking. There has to be dedicated library meeting space that cannot be co-opted by the town. That doesn't mean that people, other people in town can't share the space. It just means that library gets first dibs for its plans, you know, for that. So there are a few things in there because, I know you're gonna find this hard to believe, but here's what happens, sometimes in towns, they try and put this plan out and dot the i's and cross the t's, thinking, yeah, but really, as soon as it goes through, we're gonna change things. So MBLC, you know, if they're gonna give you grant money, they want, they want their money's worth going for what it's supposed to go for.
Absolutely. And I've never heard of that, any towns doing that, but I'll keep an eye on it. But as far as moving forward, the, the current plan, again, we're still at the brainstorming phase, right, of this whole thing, would be two separate areas, somewhere combined in the middle. Now, if there was a hallway with bathrooms in it as the combined area, would that be okay? Just try and look for the parameters moving forward.
Yeah, so certainly, the town, the, the plans have to go, I mean, your, the town's decisions have to be made regarding how that's gonna happen. Because you have to be able to, in the grant application, specify these things if, if that's what you are sure you really want to do. You can't, I don't think that they would be particularly pleased if you sent in the grant application that said, so this is, okay, this is what we want for the library and then maybe we can do this other stuff. I mean, you know how that works. People want to know for their money what they're getting.
Absolutely, and yeah, absolutely. No, once we, we were getting very familiar with grants over the past few years and we understand that getting the grant is the easy part and maintaining the grant throughout this life. and uh we understand that getting the grant is the easy part and maintaining the grant throughout its life cycle is the extremely difficult part. So meeting all the requisites for those grants um is is foremost one of our concerns as well. So moving ahead, right, so anytime we do a building, whether it's forty-five percent of eligible costs, not including furniture or landscaping, we do also have to sixty-five percent, well, fifty-five percent, I should say, comes from the town, right, the remaining funds. So is, I know recommended it was forty thousand square feet. What if it was less? Is it still prorated to a a smaller square footage?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and and let me say again, the MBLC does not care where the money comes from. Some towns get huge, I worked with a town that got a two million dollar donation. And a town that, and other towns that people have done all kinds of fundraising to um ameliorate the town's share. So the town, the tricky thing is, if you decide to accept the grant, the town has to, and you know this from the way Massachusetts um funding works. The town has to approve, has to vote to um, vote the whole amount, not just the grant award. They have to vote the whole amount. Um and then the process takes the same course it always takes, that you submit for the grant share. It's just like the schools, um, you know, school building.
Would they, do they frown upon, or do they look less at joint buildings, like if there was two towns going for money? Do they tend to go towards the one that's exclusive before they come to the one that's joint?
Oh, um, um, these are, these are rated on Rubrik. So they're, 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 these are scored, these grants are um scored on point basis, you know. So would it affect the points? Um, I think that's on the website. I think the rubric's up, I think the scoring's up on the, on the state website, so that you can see exactly what they look at and exactly how the points are allocated. Let me just say one other thing, though, that, because I get asked this frequently as well. They do highly approve of towns that want, that two towns, if they wanna go together to have a library. That you get a boost for that. And so far, there's only, there are only two towns in the Commonwealth that have ever done that. And always because the towns don't want to, they want their own libraries. There have been several that have gotten all the way to the end and the town, and the townspeople have said no. But I'm just throwing that out for your information, because that's.
I mean, it would make sense with Lakeville, but at the same time, yeah, they already have a new library. They probably don't wanna take on that additional cost. And just coordinating that, it's, I can understand why it's difficult to do.
Berkeley's applying, so that's, they told me that.
Okay.
They were like, if you wanted to look into that, Berkeley's applying.
Yeah, which makes sense, but then then essentially located part of of the uh kind of, and just, just to be clear, so like, do we know what percentage of these grants are awarded? Like, there's a chance, right, that we could apply for this and?
So what, now, now they've changed the um, the way they're doing the grant, the whole grant making process this year. In the past, there there was a separate application for the planning and design grant. And once you got that, then you applied for the construction grant.
Okay.
This time, they're making it all one. So you get the planning and design grant. Uh, I mean, you apply for the planning and design grant. If you get that, and what they're thinking this time is, they're going to probably give two planning and design or two grants and one alternate in different categories. And the categories are by population, small, medium and large. And you fit in small.
Not small, but.
Well, no, under fifteen.
Yeah.
Under fifteen thousand.
Separate grant for small.
Right. Oh, no, there's a separate grant for small, small libraries, but the other three are, they just call them small, medium and large. But under fifteen, uh fifteen thousand and then another chunk and then the real big ones. So that's, it's a different process this year. And they're hoping that that will, and they're modeling it more on the Mass School Building, uh the way Mass School Building does it. Because Mass School Building is one seamless, once you get it, there are phases, but once you get it, you're in. After the planning and design process, however, when you get your estimates and everything together, the town can choose not to go forward as well. So you're not locked into a construction grant by going through the planning and design.
Okay, that's, that's important, no.
Right, that's, that's, yeah, right, that's important.
Right. So the planning and design phase gives you the information you need to make a formal.
Now, is that grant uh forty-five percent as well, or is that a fully funded grant, or is that the town have to kick in?
They're all the same.
All the same, so at forty-five percent, and then the town pays the remaining balance.
I just wanna comment, um, back at the the Springtown meeting, we appropriated a hundred and fifty thousand. So they will match that a hundred thousand for that. So that was, that's the money towards the planning and design grant. I also wanna comment that they did this design grant differently in the past, and Lucille knows. And we got the planning and design grant in two, the year two thousand, and we had gotten thirty thousand dollars. And originally back then, that's how we pay for this. So we also have some of that money left over as well to go towards this um planning and design process.
Yeah, coming in here, I was uh looking back at the old meetings and I was, I was happy to come in here and say, hey, I know we have money in the bank somewhere for the, you know, the the build out of this thing. So so thank you for re-reading, re-saying that, so that people at home know that, hey, this was already approved back in in June. So, which is great. So.
Just talk numbers. So what what are we talking right now for, for municipal building? What are we talking about square feet wise? Like, how much a square foot? Just, I'm trying to get some.
Cost?
Like, nine hundred?
I know, I think it's more like eleven hundred right now.
Yeah. Which has changed from when this building was built.
Well, this building is um twelve thousand square foot, the first floor. It's two stories, so it's around twenty-four thousand square feet. And it was thirteen point five million dollars. But also, there's a lot of high tech in this building that you wouldn't necessarily have in um, in a library, uh COA slash building. So I estimate it right around between a thousand and eleven hundred dollars a square foot. We're at the fire station and it's, it's, it's about a thousand dollars a square foot.
Yeah, so I, my Excel here, so it's like fourteen point four million-ish.
Right.
Original, all, and and then, you know, if we get, we get about seven million covered by the grant uh for the eligible cost. So that could be, it's hard to say what the eligible, without really looking deep into it, what the eligible costs are.
It's right, that, which is the absolute value of the planning and design process, that then you get your real numbers.
Yeah, exactly.
Or you're close enough real numbers unless we have another COVID-type um situation where the cost goes totally.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
So I just wanna clarify, in order to get the grant, you have to build the square footage, right? Even if it's a joint building, the library's portion needs to be at least twelve thou- between twelve thousand and fourteen thousand.
Not, not necessarily, because some of the common spaces, um, for example, the auditorium and things like that can be um, you know, shared, yeah, yeah. So there, there is, and for that, I would say, you know, Nicole will talk to um the, the library consultant at Mass Board of Library Commission. She's incredibly helpful and savvy and would not, um, and would give you just the best advice to do the best you can for how to plan for the shared spaces.
And the planning and um design phase, if we're proposing a joint building, would they design the other portion of the building?
That's a, that's an excellent question, that, have you talked to Andrea about that part?
No, not yet.
Okay. No.
Because it almost will have to be designed.
Together.
Right, and and so the other question is, you know, how um, how specific are the plans? Does the, does the COA have documents similar to the library building program? That would be able to do, you know, get, to be able to say what they're looking for, what they need, those kinds of things.
I mean, they had done a feasibility study, and I don't know that I have anything. I have the drawings, I don't know if I have like a planned document like you've prepared. I know I don't have a document like what you've prepared, but do I have something that can be used? I don't know, I'd have to go back and look. There, I mean, what we're proposing for the COA too is not necessarily everything that they feel they might need. It's sort of what we think we can do as a town financially. But I'm just trying to weigh all the options to see what makes the most sense here, you know. If we, if we do go into design um and planning phase and we spend, you know, the town has allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding. At least if at the end of that, if we, you know, we come to determination, maybe we have plans that we can move forward with. I don't know, you know. We would have costs and we would have more information than what we have right now.
Exactly, right, that's what, yeah, you would, so for the, that would be for the library portion. We can talk to Andrea. Uh, I don't know how much conversation you've had. I know Nicole has talked to her a bit, but um we can get more specifics, but I'm, you know, just not sure exactly what it is that they need in terms of shared building space and what, how the, how the process would work. But if if that's something that's critical, um, then we will certainly get that information.
Yeah, she's here for us, so like.
Yeah, she is.
Anybody can reach out to her too with questions.
Oh, great.
That's what they're there for.
Yeah.
We, I mean, you know, we're, we have two processes of land that are possibly eligible to put a new building on. So we're limited at this point too. So as you know, I've said in the past, we have so much critical need in the town. We have, we need multiple buildings. So it it's very plausible that we need to put double, you know, have put both needs on one piece of land because we only have limited amount of land left. So I, I think that's what we've been talking all along, to make things work for the town. My concern is always funding. Um, obviously, we can do all this work, but if the town doesn't fund it, we don't go anywhere with it. And that would be my concern with sort of partnering, partnering up with another town like Berkeley. I I don't know, what if we said okay to the funding, but they didn't? I mean, this, we, we have this with the schools, right? And that's just very difficult, and that puts us in a difficult position, as well as location-wise, where we're such a big town. We wanna be centrally located so everybody can use it. Where would we go to help Berkeley, you know?
That's what I, that's what I told her. I was like, it would be, not that, but obviously then you have two directors, you have two, how do you staff?
Yeah, I actually, um, Hamilton, Wyndham is the town that, are the two towns that did it, did this, have the joint library. And they, it's been um, I think tw- around twenty twenty. And they were the, they have, their facilities happen to be close anyway. You know, the the two libraries happen to be close anyway. But I was in there the other day and I, I really didn't, I didn't talk to the director, but I talked to a couple other people and they, they worked around it. But it wasn't, it wasn't particularly easy, but they worked around it. But I, I can tell you, there's another, there are a couple other towns that I worked with after they made their decision. Had nothing to do with um, with, I found out in working with them, that one town voted yes and one town voted no, so it didn't go. And I mean, that's all you can do is just see if if it works, if you find, if it doesn't, fine. But it does also answer the question, why does every town have to have its own library? And the answer is because most of them want their own libraries, so, you know. But that's why MBLC recognizes the value of sharing, if they're willing to um put a premium on town sharing, so, and you, you guys need to know that, you know, just.
Thank you.
Can you explain to everybody when the application has to be in the grant application?
End of.
First question.
End of May.
May thirty-first, yeah.
Okay. What, do we have to have this plan designed by then?
Nope, they don't do any.
So we do it after the fact, if we get an award? If the town gets an award?
Yeah.
And there's nothing that would say that if we get an award, to do the planning, once we get the plan together, then it's submitted again?
To the town for the funding.
That's it.
Of the, of the, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Paul, you answered, you, you asked one of my next questions, so. I appreciate that. So uh following along that path, right, uh, we apply for the grant. We get, we get the good news from the state saying, or federal, uh, saying, hey, you guys get the money moving forward. Now, will, this might be an Andrea question, but will, let's say, we come back and then it's smaller than we anticipated, right? Based on budgets, and that's really what's gonna drive a lot of this, is what the town can afford without raising taxes, which is the goal, right? We don't wanna raise any taxes using, utilizing current funds and bonding the remainder, right? That's, that's the goal, right? Uh, we, we gotta try to stick to that as closely as possible as you, as you can imagine, right? So if it does come back shorter or smaller than anticipated, again, we, we talked about prorating some of the, the size and scope of everything else. Is that still a possibility as far as the design portion of it, right? We go out, again, it might be an Andrea question, I just wanna make sure that.
I think, yeah, I I would be more comfortable, I mean, I know that before you get the grant, you know, they, she will work really hard to make sure that it's um, if, you know, that everything goes through. But once you've gotten the grant and accepted it, you have to do what you said the building program said you're gonna do.
That I think we can all agree on. Once we have a plan in place, it's submitted and the grant's approved and we get the grant, I, I know the folks in this room will make sure that it's followed to the T, so I'm not worried about that.
Is it, your question more about like the size, is that?
Well, correct. So my concern is moving forward, when I look at a forty thou- like, I look at this building, first floor, forty thousand square feet. You know, right now, I believe you have thirty-five hundred square feet, I think, give or take, in the library, a little less. So, um, go ahead, if you have something to say.
So within reason, there's like a little bit of wiggle room within reason. And I think too, like, something that Andrea told me is like, you know, these are estimates at the end of the day. An architect might be like, okay, this area, you don't need that much space, you know, things like that. But at the end of the day, your building has to last for thirty years to get the grant. So it has to be sufficient to last for thirty years. So if you cut too much out, they're gonna be like, yeah, that's not gonna last you for thirty years and.
I'm, I'm a penny saver, so when I look at a building like this and it says it's gonna last fifty years, I am happy. So when I hear thirty, let's make it forty, right? I'm all for that. I think longevity is the goal, right? Same time, there, we have constraints as a town administration. We, we owe X amount of dollars to throw into a, into the pool. And not to mention, like, we've already, actually, it's already been mentioned, whenever this is done with, right, the next step, we have to go in front of the townspeople at town meeting. And we have to tell them, hey, this is what we're looking at, right? So it has to be palpable, it has to be something that they can digest and take in and say, hey, will this raise taxes? Well, it not raise taxes. So um, I'm glad to hear that we were able to, once we submit it, where I think is a great first step, right? Getting some funds and getting something designed on paper, so we can go back to the folks and say, hey, this is what it looks like, where can it go? So those are the things we're still working on in the committee.
And Nicole, and Nicole and Andrea will, will work really closely to fine tune it so that um, nobody's blindsided at the end or anything like that, you know.
That's exactly our goal as well, full transparency.
Yeah, so I was gonna, Amy Seifer, Librarian trustee. So one of the questions I had when we were going through this process is, what if we say, alright, but we only wanna build seven thousand? Then we don't get the grant, is what it comes down to. We, the parameters are tighter than we're thinking. So we have to go in open-eyed that we may not get fourteen, but we can't reduce it so significantly that we're at like half. Because then we just won't then get it. And then we'll be on the hook for the entire construction bill of a future library as opposed to, uh, you know, partial and supportive of construction, because we're already paying for that money.
Sure.
It's already, we've already as taxpayers put that money in for the MBLC to have. So it's like, just, we just want some of that money back.
Yeah, but as a caveat to that, the, the town reserves the right of not accepting the grant when it's done and paying for the construction costs, because it may be cheaper in the long run. Whether that's true or not, we will know until those numbers are, so there are options. They're not locking into one hundred percent, if you need to back out, we need to back out. Is that ideal? No, I want as much money as possible from another entity other than us. So we'll do everything we can to stay in that budget. Um, Mr. Wayne, did you have something to say?
No, I think along the same line, and I might have just got clarified, it was kind of my comment about size, but because I know earlier in, in the meeting, you really asked if we build a smaller building, does that disqualify us from eligible for the grant? The answer was no. So I was led to believe, okay, we can build something smaller. But then you asked um the question, similar question, and the answer was, well, the common space can be excluded, but it sounds like the, the non, the, the non-share space is pretty much a lock. And those elements have been put into a, a software program and, and the result has been eleven thousand net square foot. And maybe you can tweak it a little bit, but it's not gonna be tweaked much, because you've already provided the parameters that develop this kind of building. So if we say yes, go ahead with the planning and design, I would imagine, they're gonna come back with a planning and design of thirteen thousand square foot building. Maybe we tweaked it a little bit. thirteen thousand square foot building. Maybe we tweaked it a little bit, ten percent away, but we're never gonna get fifty percent of that away. And then the second question I had while I, while I can, is if, if I heard correctly, there are two grants within the state that would get awarded to small category library building programs. Did I hear that correctly?
I'm, I'm not really. Well, there's, there's one, there's one grant that is reserved for towns with population under twenty five hundred. And they're not competing with the, I'm sorry, with the other.
Small groups.
Right. That's the, that's, that's a separate, totally separate. The other three breakdowns of population are in the same pool.
So in your experience and, and dealing with other towns in the state, what's our competition for, for the grant?
It's under, it's fifteen thousand square feet or under.
Be more like how many other towns? So I, I cannot call, I don't know exactly how many people. So like, you have to file a letter of intent. That does not mean that every town that did that is going to submit. So you really, I can't say. I mean, you could probably find out how many people applied for the, the grant, they led to their letter of intent, but you won't really know, like, obviously. I don't know.
There were twenty, I think there were twenty eight letters of intent.
But often like, you know, but it's not always.
So, so keeping his concerns in mind, throughout the, when we submit this plan, design grant phase, right? So I'm trying to take from all sides and kind of get, get an answer there. So we, we move forward with the plan, design grant and somewhere in the mix, we comes back, says X, Y, Z square footage, let's say ten thousand to make it rounded, right, a nice round number. Comes back to the town, town says, we need a smaller. That is, is that the prorated version, that's that prorated?
Nope, state says, go right ahead, do whatever you want. And, and there are towns, I've certainly written building programs for towns who have chosen not to submit for grants and have chosen to either do nothing or do something on their own. So that's, that's totally the way it is. As I said before, you know, if the, if the MBLC is the grantor, we all know how it works with grants. They, you know, the grantor sets the rules and that's it.
Fully understand.
Yeah. The other thing to think about and look at is what the cost of doing something smaller would be. I mean, what the town's share would be to do something smaller versus, and not, and not applying for the grant versus applying for the grant and leveraging that money. And it might cost you, it might cost you a little bit more. I mean, frequent, frequently when these studies are done, that, that what you get for just doing it yourself with the amount of money that you choose to put in is not sufficient. But if you leverage it with the grant money and maybe a little bit more, not, and not a vast amount more, just, just a little bit more, you can have the whole thing by having the town, you know, having the town apply for and get the grant. But that's something that once you find out what the grant is or in the process of finding out, you know, what would be the cost to do just something smaller and, and how close is that number?
You're absolutely correct. And that's the, the appeal of submitting the design and grant, sorry, the planning and design grant. Because we, we don't have those numbers yet, right? And that is one of the next steps in the subcommittee. And this process is figuring out square footage, cost estimates and things like that. So then we can figure out how much money to throw at this from our perspective. So you're right, it could be that we don't apply for the grant, right? After the design phase, so.
It's all together.
Oh, I know, I know. Obviously, as far as moving forward with the full.
You can choose not to, but you will know then what the town's share would have to be to not to, to do a smaller space versus, you know, what the grant would, would pay for. So.
What is the downside of applying for the grant?
I don't see any downside. You've already got, you've already got it, yeah.
So if we apply and we happen to get picked, then at that point, we get some money to start the planning. And if we find out that what they're telling us to build is far beyond our means, we're out. And there's no cost to the town to say we don't want the rest of it.
Just whatever you spent.
Just with the money we allocated for that, for that portion, correct. No, you're absolutely correct, Paul. It's a hundred and fifty thousand from what we allocated from last meeting to get some actual plans to move forward versus millions of dollars. It's, it's pennies on the dollar. It's, it's, it's well worth the, taking the next step with the grant process. You're right. And if it does come back saying, hey, this is outside of our realm of possibilities for this year, then we, yeah, we either kick it down the can or we regroup as a, as a committee and say, hey, what's our next step? Do we go back to the townspeople and then re-ask, right? So no, I think moving forward, it's, it sounds like a great plan.
Can I ask a question? Mary, what is the timeline? So if we apply for the grant in May of twenty four, when will the, when will it be awarded?
Probably around this time next year, sometime in the fall.
They said the fall, late fall winters when you'll find out if you.
Twelve of twenty four and then design plan a year?
One to two.
So June of twenty six?
Yeah. So you're looking at essentially starting, you're probably looking at four to five years before you open the door, the building, that's just how long it takes.
Are you trying to line that up with like our general timeline we're hoping for, for the joint building, right? They all have to kind of.
I'm just, and I'm also thinking about funding and financially where we're gonna be in five years in terms of what other needs. It's just good to know that timeline for other reasons. So.
Yeah. So you have plenty of time to plan.
You do have time to plan for that.
It may seem like far away, four or five years, but build, put the building together, that's actually.
From this end, it seems very far away.
At this perspective, yeah. But it's actually, you know, like Deb was just saying, it's four or five years from now, our financials look much different than they do today. Right? So Wayne, did you have a question?
So did I understand then, so about a, a year from the application is when it's determined whether the grant, the plan and design grant is awarded. And then another two years, one to two years for the designs to be complete. So that would be two to three years before the town would have the information on what size building is being recommended in the design to decide whether to accept the grant.
So probably a couple of years, at least, at least two, because the, it's six months. It'll take them six months to evaluate the applications. And then, and then just, I mean, all the things that have to go into, you know, selecting architects, selecting the OPM, the architects and all the, all the work that goes into that, that's, you know, that's a couple of years.
Can I comment?
Go ahead.
So yeah, so next, so winter, by winter twenty twenty four, you'll know if you got the grant. And then they said that by spring twenty twenty six, you have to have the, the funding secured for the R half based on the estimate from late fall twenty twenty five. So that's just, so you have to have like, you have to vote to accept the grant and then vote to allocate your money by spring twenty twenty six. So most towns probably start in the fall, probably starting to put that on town meetings so that they have the chance to.
No, I, I think the lo, the longer, the further way it is, it actually benefits the town. Because we still have to look at and look at the feasibility study from the COA and everything else and get the wants and needs from everybody. So timeframe kind of lines up. Again, four or five years seems like it's so far away, but in scheme of things, it really isn't. It's gonna go by fast. And then again, like, like we've all said, if we don't accept, if we don't want the grant afterwards, all said and done, we don't accept it. We move forward with whatever options we decide.
And whoever the alternate is will thank you profusely.
What is, at what point do we need to say where we're gonna construct the building? Because one of my concerns is we talk about our, we're a big town, we got a lot of woods. But as a town, we don't have a lot of land that we would say, okay, this is a good place to put it right now. So I, it's just an honest question.
So when you submit the grant, you have to have two site options. So you need to have at least two. And like, again, they, purchasing land does fall, I believe, under an eligible cost?
Purchasing land, but not, it, it's in the process of being purchased or land that could be purchased?
You have to have a purchase and sale in hand to accept the grant.
Okay, that's a big difference.
Not the planning and design grant. The planning and design grant you have to submit to just two site options.
Right. That's one of those costs that you have to kind of calculate when you, you look at this grant, even the building, whether you're knocking buildings down, existing lots or buying new land, it's, it still costs money, right? So you have to factor that in somewhere along the line. I'm sure, again, we'll look forward to speaking with Andrea, maybe we can invite her to a a, a future meeting, the Council of Asia Library Meeting, so we can ask those questions.
And again, though, cost of land is an eligible cost.
I love that. I love that word. It's a go, Paul.
How does that factor in percentage wise? I'm sorry, I feel like we're getting attacked in every direction here, but. So say, I'm just gonna throw a round number out, where we found a piece of land, we're gonna purchase it for a million dollars. Will you say, okay, forty five percent, so you're gonna cover four hundred and fifty thousand, or they're gonna cover four hundred and fifty thousand? But we're gonna use that and put the COA there as well. How does that factor? They're just gonna prorate the whole thing as well? So, okay. Yeah, that's good to know. That's, that's huge.
That's a great piece of information. Absolutely.
I have one more question. There's no preclusion from having a two-story library?
No, no, no. You can, once again, I mean, that's why, when you bring in the architects, they try and figure out what can fit on the land that you have. I mean, so the, the way these, the building program works, for some libraries, it's, even though it's site neutral, the options are renovation of an existing building, addition renovation or new construction. And even looking at the ones that you probably expect people want additional innovation because it's a historic building and, and things like that. You still have to submit two sites, but that, the architects, that's, the architects come in and look at it and figure out what they can, how they can fulfill the building program. And if it takes two stories, you know, then that's it, or three stories.
Yeah, we have identified two sites. I mean, we do have that legwork done.
Yep.
The only two sites we have, but.
So that's helpful. And then, yeah, so absolutely, there's, there's no limitation on, on that at all.
I think that's the answer.
The site ID, those two sites, does that go in with the grant application? Okay, let's say we send in two sites and subsequently, let's say we get the award and now we have another site. Is that gonna be an issue?
I don't know. We'd have to ask about that because, right, we'd have to.
I think it's, it's more that you can't, they don't, you can't be like, okay, this is the land, this is where we're putting it. You can't like, make that decision. They want to like, evaluate it them.
They want to know that you have really given this consideration, that you haven't made up your mind ahead of time. That's gonna limit anything that you've really thought about it.
Like I said, a lot of the information we need is the next step, location, funding, things like that. So this gives us an opportunity to look at that and say, hey, what is the best thing for our town, for all residents, not just one group or the other? So absolutely. Wayne, did you have a question?
As a guide, or is there a guide perhaps in determining a site, an adequate site for a percentage of the support area needed for say a fourteen thousand square foot building? How much, what's the additional percentage for parking, driveways, septic? Well, to know what an adequate site is in all support.
Yep. And that, that's part of the engineering study. The MBLC requires one parking space for every four hundred square feet of building. In addition, there is a state regulation that requires EV, electronic vehicle charging stations as well. So that all goes in the pot. And then is again, right, the septic and the water and things like that, that, that's all part of the next step of the study.
Well, you brought up solar and so, so a quick question. I didn't see it in the report. For already doing solar charging as a requirement, are there any additional grants or additives if we added solar panels on the roof?
There is an incentive, extra money if you do any sort of.
Solar and natural.
Leads, net zero.
Yeah, so you get an additional three percent of that like eligible like cost. So there's like three different, I think, ones, municipal, I don't know, I don't know what any of this means, but a municipal opt-in specialized stretch code, gold or platinum level of lead, is that? Or zero energy certification through some living future institute or something? And again, I can send more.
Lead, lead is a good program, but it could add some cost to the project as well. So if you go to, we.
And some of those parameters are morphing a little bit that, you know, the, but the striving for sustainability gives you, or including sustainability, however you decide to do, whatever the technology is at the time, will, will benefit you.
Makes sense.
There, there's also another, like, extra thing, the need factor is like another.
Oh, yes.
That gets added to, like, points that get added to your.
We should get a lot of those points, I'm assuming.
So I don't know what it goes, the need factor goes up to, but ours is nine point eight. For the, our municipality, not just for the library, for the municipality. But I'm not sure what it goes up to.
Nicole, when you say nine point eight, is that additional savings or?
On the gray amount that, that gets added.
Yeah.
Okay. I like when they add up, so. Yeah, anything like, I, I think we're all on the greens on that. Anything that we can do to save as much money as possible, that, that's the goal in the key, right? So, yeah, no, I'm.
I think just the one thing to keep in mind when you're thinking about the size of the building, even though the cost to the town to build a six thousand square foot self-funded building versus a twelve thousand square foot building that is fifty percent funded by a grant is the operating cost. And we know, if we've learned one thing from this police station, is the operating costs are very high, the bigger the building. So that just needs to be taken into consideration. It's not just the build cost, it's the sustainability of that building once we have it. So certainly if we're gonna do a ten thousand square foot library building, I think we need to definitely plan on solar panels or energy efficiency type stuff, because the cost is, is high for those big buildings like that, you know?
And I mean, any, operating costs are gonna go up, no matter what you do, they're, they're gonna go up somehow. But that's, you know, thinking about that and planning carefully for it ahead of time is, is crucial.
Yeah, no, a lot of planning has been done. I'm sorry, go ahead. Do you have a question? Can you say your name for the record?
Stand a chance of getting the grant? Are there, the other towns that are applying for grants, are they in the dire need that our libraries are in? Do they have running water? So do we stand a good chance?
I would say yes. I mean, obviously, like I said, there's a, a like a checklist and rating system that they have. And one of the sections is about like health and safety. And like, I think all of ours are dire.
But we love the fighting spirit, so.
And for the trustees, we've sat in other meetings with other towns. And then, of course, we Google their structures and we're like, look at those fancy. We just are in like pretty much the worst shape of anybody on those calls. So I mean, if we were a gambling group, I think we're very good to be top of that list.
All right. So, but so I guess the big picture for me is that having a joint, joint COA library doesn't preclude us from, from applying, right? And also, as Paul, that was a very great question, there's no harm really in applying, you know, we, we have the opportunity to not go forward with this and won't be on the hook for a ton of money, right? So any other questions before?
Anybody?
Yep, Paul.
You guys give us the go ahead to apply?
I think that.
All right. So with that, so I'm in a motion to, to apply for the Massachusetts Library Grant Program.
Motion made.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then, agenda item six is kind of discussion on our current library operations. I think we all, we've, we've talked about that through this conversation. I'm not sure if we need to, you know, is there anything specific that we need to talk about? We know, we know the state we're in.
I mean, for the trustees, we just worry about, you know, it's not an if we replace the libraries, it's a when. Because we're just gonna lose staff, we can't ask staff to stay in structures where they have no office, they have no restroom, they have no water. I mean, none of us would say like, oh, we're going to work tomorrow, I gotta do this, guy would immediately be like looking for more jobs. So the reality that we have a really hardworking library director, we have really great library staff, we wanna keep them and give them some hope. Um, it's re, it is hard, we are operating at like bare bones functioning. So, keeping that in mind, that they're keeping it alive while we work on this process, but this process still has to happen.
Hmm, yeah, I I think everyone on this side of the table and and that side as well, uh, we know, you know? Um, it's one of those conversations that I think I've said countless times, I'll continue saying it, it's a conversation that's been had from all sides, from the Council of Aging Library thirty, forty, fifty years, you know, keep passing it, keep passing the buck, and um I I know when I, time for my retirement, I want a place to go and read, I want a place to go and play some pool and hang out with some friends, so this makes sense. So.
All right, great, so I think I'm gonna, I think we're all settled that conversation, I'm gonna move on, but thank you.
I just wanna make a motion for adjournment.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Appreciate all the hard workers, thank you.
Somebody needs a second, somebody needs a second.
All right, thank you very much.
Everybody, great presentation, thank you.
All right, so with that, um, agenda item seven, this is to authorize the uh cultural council to accept holiday decorations for the bandstand on behalf of the town, anyone have any discussion on that?
No, I think that's uh, that sounds awesome, decorations are hard to find, and they're expensive, so.
So.
Squirrels ate him.
So without, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the council, council, oh wow, cultural council to accept holiday decorations for the bandstand on behalf of the town.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, all right, so now we have a discussion on approval on issuing the Freetown MMA, uh, sorry, FreetownMA.gov email addresses. It looks like we have like about
Quite a few.
Is that what I saw?
The new email server is up and running, as you all know.
Yep.
And so now we have unlimited capabilities of um giving out email addresses. So we've set it up so that I wanted them to request an email addresses, and I just want somebody to approve who gets those email addresses, so there's some sense of, you know, the way we're done.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, we don't wanna give them that willy-nilly, I think there should be a paper trail for every approval.
Yes.
Um, you know, town employees obviously should all have one already, and then it's it's anyone who's uh elected or, you know, on committee or anything of that nature.
Yes, these chairs, it's mostly just all, you know, volunteer boards, and then give them up to the chair of the board and that way they they don't have to do it personally, because we don't want that to cause for public.
Yeah, well, and also, I think that we should have a process where yearly these are audited. Right, just to make sure that that there's no one's.
Like when we appoint the people we.
It's a part of that process, right?
Yeah, some training as well, some online, some cyber awareness training of some sort.
That is true.
Or just that we should, we we take them away when the person, the the, you know, the board changes, we make sure the right person has the who's the email address, but it'll also be good for continuity, right? Because, so it's the cultural council chair, and when they leave and there's a new chair, they can, they have the history there.
Yeah, that's awesome, yeah, that that, I mean, that's very helpful, so uh, that makes a lot of sense, so having having the email addresses be more general, right?
Right.
And then, you know, individuals can have them too, but.
They can have access to it.
Yeah.
As needed bases down the road.
It's like your your emails, like, like, you know, town administrator, right?
Yeah, town administrator, so when, you know, continuity, if I leave, the emails will still keep coming, and the next person can just.
That's a great, that's a really good point.
Yeah, yeah, those records are vital, they belong to the town, so absolutely.
Yep, so uh, the vote here, is it really on, is it approving this memo here?
Well, the, some of the boards and committees are asking for multiple members to have email addresses.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's what you wanna do, I put in some suggestions on to making them generic, like water sewer chair, water sewer one. You know, at Freetown, I don't know if you wanna have multiples or just one, and they can share the credentials, or.
Do we have an unlimited amount of uh seats, uh, I should say?
We do now.
We don't, we don't pay any additional costs for, there's no batches, right, first fifty are free, the next fifty are a thousand dollars apiece.
Have as many as you want, it's our own server now.
So.
And you don't want everybody.
It becomes difficult to um manage the more that we have out there.
But you also don't want other, you know, you need things to kind of funnel through the chair a little bit, I mean.
It kind of makes, I think like it would make sense to have email addresses for, yeah, chair, and then board member one, board member two, board member three, like, however many members there are on the board.
Yeah, some of these boards have eleven people.
Does that make sense? Or is that, so like?
Makes sense, if you want it to make sense, I mean, I don't think.
Well, let me ask this question, so let's say, right, following Trevor's li- line of thinking, right, let's say you take one committee, it has eleven people. So you have eleven email addresses for that committee, times how many committees we have in town, it's not gonna bog down our server in any way? This is just unlimited storage, unlimited capacity.
I'm just, I'm I'm worried about who's manning them, right, like, if you wanna set up a meeting to talk to the cultural council and you you send it to board member six, I just feel like it it might get lost in the shuffle, whereas if you have one, maybe you just have info at cultural council, and everything goes to info, and so, and most people can man it, but you just don't have a bunch of different.
So you can do email forwarding, right, so like to your point is if you have all of us up here all have an email address, and then DJ wants to send us an email, it comes to one generic thing, and then, you know, fires out to the five of us, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud of how do we do it so that people protect themselves? Because whether it be a board chair or an individual, to your point, with records requests and everything, I think that everyone should have something that they can use that's represented for the town.
I think you need one, yeah, I think that, I think that you need one person responsible for each email address, right? Like, so like the chair is responsible for the chair one, and then you have, then you have one for each board member?
Okay.
Because that then, if someone does send an email that is in question, right? We don't, we can't always say, well, it wasn't me, right, because then multiple people, if multiple people have the same ac- access to the same email address, I think that's gonna cause an issue, where you know, this is, if you were assigned board number one, and this email came from you, we know it's board member one, whoever is John Smith, right?
Sounds good.
And then, so then, and then it's easy to track on an, like an Excel sheet, like, you know, these are the board members, this person's board number one, two, three, and, you know, this is the effective dates of that email address, and then, once they're, you know, uh, you know, if they're not on the board the next come around, that email just gets reassigned.
Yeah, just change the password.
Just change the password, right, so it's one person per email address, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
I'm all geared up.
Can we add a caveat to that, if the, if the chair asks, I say, give the chair of the committee the ability to say how many emails they need? Right, some people may not want one, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, I guess what I was thinking is, is um.
Again, I've asked them to request and then have you guys approve it, just so you know what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect, but I do like the idea of more general email addresses, and then they, they have to update, a part of the process, they have to update their signature. Right, line on their emails, so that like, that that should be a mandatory thing, so like, it it comes from, you know, John Smith, and it's his information for those emails, like that's a part of when you update your password, you update your signature. I'm just trying to think about, if I was auditing these, what would I be looking for, right? All right, so is there a vote here? What is the vote? Brain is mush, been a long day.
I thi- I think us, we all circled back to the, to the original thing about giving them the addresses, I think that's what we all circled back to.
Yeah, so I guess, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion that we um issue email addresses for each board member, um and our general email addresses for for each board member, that will be uh reused in the future, I don't know, it's a really terrible motion. Boards and committees, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
All right, I'll, I'll, motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a tough one.
Yeah.
Clean that up and pose, please.
We bored that one out.
All right, uh, so next, agenda item nine is uh whether or not to close the Council on Aging the Friday after Thanksgiving. Any discussion on this?
No.
Think that makes sense, right?
Always done.
Yeah, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to to close the Council on Aging the Friday after Thanksgiving.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we have the agreement between the Town of Freetown and General Code for Qualification Services. Anything that's uh particularly interesting?
Well, the cost kind of stuck out a little bit, as far as the operating cost of this. I know the original plan, uh, we that we allocated at the special town meeting, right, back in October, it was around twelve, ten thousand dollars, ten, right?
Yeah, it was seventy eight hundred.
Right.
Right, and then eleven hundred. So seventy, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty is the original price? And then it's what, twelve hundred dollars a year? Am I reading that right?
Yeah, yeah.
So we, so we probably got a little more money than we needed, which is fine, if you don't use it, it goes back to the general fund.
Well, it looked like it was estimated cost, I didn't see it was a hard number, the seventy eight hundred dollars, I could be reading that wrong, um I don't know if you have any additional information, Debbie. The way it read, it was estimated.
Well, I'm sure if I, if we have additional, I'm, additional bylaws, right, as they come on, you know, throughout the year, they probably charge us an extra fee to to codify those bylaws.
Throw them in there, yeah.
I think that's what that twelve hundred is.
That's what I was gonna say, is that what the operating cost is, to update it as we go.
I don't, I feel like this is a set price.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I'm trying to see where it would make me like to believe that it was was anything but, but yeah.
They probably have some kind of clause in case something goes real wrong, they could, but generally, all right, but yeah, nothing looks crazy to me there.
Yeah, and right, twelve hundred dollars a month, a year is is less than what we pay for other IT systems here in town.
Yeah.
And there's no, I didn't see anything in there, and if, unless someone else saw it, that says we're locked in for life, so we can cancel this at any point, I didn't see any any clause or rule saying that we have to lock in five years, max ten years, this is a as we go basis.
Yep.
Okay.
So, all right, so that, so I'll entertain a motion to agree, approve the agreement between Town of Freetown and General Code for Qualification Services.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we have some class two motor vehicle license, so uh, A is Christopher J. Cabral, DBA CJ Auto Sales, and Alfred R., um, wow, I know this guy, Ray Mopazier. There we go. I've never seen his name written down, uh, but Alfred R. Mopazier for Ray's Garage. So without, I'll entertain a motion to approve um the twenty twenty four renewal of class two motor vehicle license for AMV.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Geez, I'm losing it. All right, now we have class three motor vehicle license, uh, John Broden, DBA CSA Auto Sales, and Petty Auto Savage LLC. With that, any discussion? No? I'll entertain a motion to approve those two class three motor vehicle license.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have two snowplow contracts for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, so uh, it's Ziatz. Wizat, wow, Wizat's Welding and Fabrication LLC and Zussi Brothers LLC, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve both those snowplow contracts for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Real quick, Debbie, do you know if this brings us up to full speed as far as snowplow, or is it, we still need more people?
I don't believe he is.
I don't think we ever have been.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think we ever will be.
Just for those out there listening and watching, if you know somebody that plows, contact Town Hall, please.
Yeah, we, we don't even have as many as we had last year.
We do not.
It's not gonna snow, it's not gonna snow.
Oh, I think it is, I heard it much, yeah.
All right, and now we have an application to put a house trailer at one five seven Middleborough Road, uh, while rebuilding the residence. What's the timeline here, just to put, just put dates on it?
I think it's just as long as the.
Construction cost.
Up to two years generally, this is the, where the car went right through the.
Oh, yeah, all right, I, any discussion issues with that?
I don't know how that happened.
This is all through the planning board, zoning, everything, and was on on board?
So perfect.
Last he knew it wasn't through building yet, but it needs our our approval.
Yeah, for that, so.
Kyle and them are all doing their piece, what a help, they're all doing their own, you know, taking care of their part of it.
Perfect.
All right, great, so that, I'll entertain a motion to um, to approve the application to put a house trailer at one five seven Middleborough Road while rebuilding residence.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so now, I'll take it over to Selectman Loops.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair, all right, we have done fifteen and sixteen, we're moving on to personnel board, agenda seventeen. Acknowledged and disclosure forms submitted by Nick Filoso, um, he is um doing the right thing by letting us know that he's on the, on the board, and is also a co-owner of the business, so um, he filed the disclosure forms as needed, so, thank you, Nick. Uh, general, item agenda eighteen, acknowledge the resignation of James Rezendis from the Historic Commission Economic Development Committee, effective eleven eight twenty twenty three, thank you, uh, Jim, for your service in that committee. Uh, item agenda nineteen, acknowledge the resignation of Greg Goodwin from Freetown Master Plan Committee, effective eleven thirteen twenty twenty three. Um, once again, thank you, Greg, for the work you put in um in that committee. Item agenda twenty, discussion and vote to appoint a representative and designee chosen by selectmen at this meeting to the Southeastern Regional Transit Authority, SERTA, and to make said appointment effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty four. All right, folks, gentlemen, what are you guys look, thinking? Who wants to be part of SERTA?
So I was, or I think so, oh, I did some stuff with SERTA, so I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with doing it.
Sounds like you're, 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 uh, loving yourself.
Yeah.
Before he changes his mind.
Nothing else we're doing, oh, yeah.
No, I, I, um, thank you, Jared, um, that's, that's great. So it it is important that we, we, SERTA's gonna probably be making its way to town at some point with the MBTA and everything else, so having a representative on that committee is gonna be paramount for for the town. Uh, before he changes mind, I entertain the motion to appoint Jared Zager to our representative and designee chosen by this board at this today's meeting for the Southeastern Regional Transit Authority, SERTA, and make your appointment effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty four.
Make that motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's right, you can't do it.
I'm all vote.
All right, item agenda twenty one, discussion and vote.
One more on that.
What's that?
We need a representative, and then we need a designee.
Oh, we need two?
Yes.
And it can be the same person?
So, so then, we would have to.
The last round, we had, last year, it was Trevor was the representative and Jared was the designee. So now you're gonna, Jared's gonna be the representative, so I need a designee.
I'll be the designee.
All right, and then Trevor, okay.
And we're gonna have to rework that, but how do we do that, because it's two out of the three people who are involved in.
So I have to make two separate motions, two separate motions, so the first motion's already set for the representative, so we'll make a second motion to, I entertain a motion to appoint um Trevor Matthews as designee chosen by this board of selectmen on this meeting for the south re- southern, southeastern, blah, 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 Regional Transit Authority, SERTA, and make said appointment effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, all right. Item agenda twenty one, discussion and vote, who to appoint as the elected or appointed official to the Commission on Disability and to make said appointment effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through eleven twenty one twenty twenty four. Well, I I believe, I would like to take this position, um, I know a thing or two about this, this world, so.
So I'll, I'll make the motion then, all right, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint uh Selectman Loops as the um to the Commission on Disability Disabilities and make the said appointment effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through eleven twenty one twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Item agenda twenty two, discussion and vote, when to approve the following appointments. A, Deborah L. Petty, Victoria Alfaro Duran, to Sewer Line Extension Committee, effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty four. B, Mark Rosowski and Robert Parker, to Sewer Line Extension Committee, Sewer Commission Representatives, effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty four. C, Mar- Megan Corrigan, to the Cultural Council, effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through eleven twenty one twenty twenty six. D, Colby Imbert, as student officer, effective eleven four twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty four. E, Mary Beth Moore, to Commission on Disability, immediate family member, effective eleven twenty one twenty twenty three through eleven twenty one twenty twenty six. All right, any questions, concerns, comments, all right?
Selectman Loops, was Col- Colby? Selectman Loops, was Col- Colby, did you say eleven four?
Yeah, it's
Oh, all right. Sorry about the year. Maybe I said eleven four. All right, so I'm gonna redact twenty two D and re-say it. Twenty two D is Colby Ember, a student officer effective twelve four twenty twenty three through six thirty twenty twenty four. Strike my last before that. And then again, we've already said yes to all. E, Mary Beth Moore on disability on the commission. All right. So that said, I entertain the motion to appoint the aforementioned individuals from item Agenda twenty two A through E.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item Agenda twenty three, discussion and vote, when to approve the job description for Community Program Director and next steps to hire for this position. So for those keeping track, we've had this last year, we created this through town meeting. We had some successes, some new insights for the position. So we had it both Boat Ramp and Community Program, separating the two to make sure that those positions are covered. And this just as a next step forward to making sure that, because as you'll see, folks, in down the road, we'll be talking about the first half of this on the Parks Commission. So this just clarifies the position, making sure we have proper coverage and proper management of that area. So, any questions on it?
I agree with it.
All right, that said, I entertain the motion to approve the job description for Community Program Director, which are the next steps needed to hire for this position.
Make that motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item Agenda twenty four, discussion and vote, whether to designate the position of signal operators part time as special municipal employees.
What's this one mean?
Whenever a town employee holds more than one position, it's actually a conflict of interest by ethics. So we have, we have police officers and multiple other positions, police officers, we have some firefighters, but they also do dispatch and they'll fill in when they're short. They'll do dispatching, which is a great benefit to the town because they know the town and they usually know the profession.
Yeah.
But in order for them to be able to do that without a violation of the ethics, they, they need to be designated as a special municipal employees. And then I think, I think there's another step, I don't know. You're familiar with this, right, Tom?
Position, I believe, has to be designated as a special municipal employee position, and then a disclosure form will follow an affirmative vote, I believe.
Okay.
Right. So it's just so that our employees, you know, can work dispatch when we're short, which it's been a difficult to keep staff in there.
It seems like a no brainer to me. Oh, we, we need to do that.
But just to clarify, once you're in that position, right, let's say you're, you're a signal operator, once you, you were there, you were a cop that morning, and now you're a signal operator that afternoon. Something happens, that position stays open, right? That person doesn't go back to being a police officer until that shift's over, right? Nothing is, right? It's, I'm gonna make sure coverage is there.
If you're asking this question, I would, I would say they can't abandon the PSAT. So if they're manning the nine one line, somebody's manning that nine four hours, seven days a week, and if there's somebody not there, I imagine they can't just walk away.
One of the principles of the military is the general order, is you will not leave this post until properly relieved, right? So I'm assuming you folks follow that, that creed as well in your own way.
My days with signing all the policies and procedures that's, that's in there.
That's what I wanna hear.
Perfect.
So I wanna be sure that coverage is there. I know it's tough hiring and everything else, and keeping, keeping people in place is, is, is what we need. So thank you for clarifying that. So, yeah, I, I don't think there's a, if it's an ethical problem that we can fix by changing their designation on paper, in a sense, I think that's a clear, a clear way to go.
Yep.
All right, I entertain the motion to designate the position of signal operator, part time, as special municipal employees.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, can you roll through the Parks and Commission?
All right, so Agenda item number twenty five, discussion and vote on whether to approve the revised job description for the Boat Ramp Seasonal Manager and next steps for hiring for this position. As Selectman Loops had said, you know, we've, we've learned from previous things that how, what the focuses need to be on certain positions, right? So we, we kind of reworded. We kind of reworded the job description, and then I think to make it a little better in line, where you have someone who's gonna be dedicated more to Boat Ramp, and then someone else who's really gonna be dedicated for what we thought the position initially would be. So I, I don't know if you guys have any questions or concerns?
I'm looking at now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's pretty straightforward, and I think that, like I said, I keep saying and going back to it, but based on our trials and tribulations, that this is what's gonna make the most sense, to move everything forward in the right direction.
I agree with you one hundred percent on that. It's, we've learned a lot. Over the years, we kind of, we've had great luck that we've had a dedicated town employee that's, has stepped up over the years and, and continues to take it on, but at some point, that's not feasible. So this is the correct step forward.
So anyone have any Yeah, okay. All right, so then the next part of it, before I even try and entertain any motions or anything. Next steps for hiring the position, so I think, you know, the, the general rule of thumb of how we normally go about trying to hire for the position via town website, social media. I mean, I can't think of any other way, you know, unless anyone else has any other ideas to try and get along with someone.
No, I agree with you.
We actually had a HR professionals meeting here the other day where, I can't remember what the organization, Mass Hire. Um, we'll post our job openings for free.
Awesome.
So we can probably look in that route. I guess at the timeframe, like, when do you think we should start looking for this position?
Soon as possible.
It is seasonal, but yeah, I agree.
And after Christmas.
And with it, like, would it be, we would seasonally start them like in April, May, or is that gonna happen? There's a learning curve, so.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, right? The point is, you want them to be in there at the beginning of the season, ready to go. So to pay someone for a couple of weeks of training in that quote unquote off season
Yeah, but there's, there's a lot of setup to be done. There is a lot of setup. There's a lot of setup to be done, so I'd say, yeah, in April, no later than May first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It gets busy.
No, I agree. Well, that's, that's good to know with the, the Mass Hire, too. That's, that's huge.
Actually, it was interesting because they'll actually train people for the job, too. Like, if they have somebody that's not quite qualified, they will take that person and spend their money to train them. I mean, they're state funded, right? So their goal is just to get people to work. So they will, they will come in and do job fairs, too. I mean, it was really an interesting presentation.
That's great, yeah. And no cost to the town.
No cost to the town, and the other
We don't have to sign up for anything.
It's, they're there to help, help us get employees, but also to help people get jobs. So if you know somebody looking for a job, I mean, and they will retrain you and they will, I, I wanna say that I have some experience with this group before, where they actually, you know, they, they go above and beyond, like, if you, if you are capable of working, but you can't get there, but you need a bus ticket like, to get started, they, they might even fund that, like, where they give you the bus ticket for the first month.
That's a no brainer.
So their goal is just to get you to work, to get the people to work. So if that means they have to train them for our job openings, they will go above and beyond and do that. So it's a good, it was a good presentation that we had here the other day, and I think we probably will be listing jobs there.
Can't hurt the situation. We can still do the same avenues that we've always done, right? And we've had some good luck of hiring some very qualified candidates, but why not have one more angle?
More resource, yeah.
So
Good question for the board.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, is there anything that precludes the town from posting those open jobs on like the more known platform like Indeed?
Cost.
Cost.
I know the last round, when we were really trying to rake in some dispatches, we were having a hard time with social media. It wasn't really attracting or reaching as far as we wanted it to. So we did go the Indeed route, and I, I don't know if there was any costs associated, if we just used the free version of it. But I do know that we didn't get candidates that otherwise would not have seen us did a lot.
Yeah, I think if there's a free ver- like, definitely worth looking into, for sure.
Yeah, we used it for one position, I can't remember which one.
So as wide of it, you know, as possible, pass it wide enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially these days where it's so hard to hire, right? And to your point, when you have a position that seems like we've had a lot of turnover, where we've had to go after you. We can't be the only town who's in search for these certain positions, so the more angles we have to go ahead.
Last round, the police hiring, we went with the police app. It's a online service that, that a lot of police departments went to, and that's what the kids now are going to do, to find these jobs. Just changing the way of how we've done things, you know, I mean, it, it, it's a cast of a head.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. So I guess that's something we'll have to look into. So, all right, so any other questions, concerns?
No.
All right. So with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the revised job description for the Boat Ramp Seasonal Manager, and then the next steps that we talked about for hiring for this position.
All right, make that motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you very much. Now I'm gonna take it over to Debbie for the update on the police station repairs.
Thanks. I just, I, I, I just, I know that I've talked to you, you know, and let you know that we've had a lot of repairs on the police station. And I just wanted to, I asked the building facilities to kind of quantitate it that for you, because I, I don't know if you realize how much repairs we've had. And we're just pulling money out of our repair and maintenance budget, but we're already far over what we budgeted for the, for the police station. So this is more just to make you aware of what's going on, because I think it's at a level that I really needed you to see it.
Yeah.
So see what I'm seeing. And a lot of it is this HVAC system that's just been a nightmare for us. The boiler is no good. They don't make it anymore, so we can't even replace it. They are giving us a credit for the boiler of like three thousand dollars, but to replace it, we have to put a whole different type of boiler and rerun all of the, the, you know, the feeds to it and whatnot, and it's gonna be quite expensive. So we were able to get the old boiler up and running, but I don't know for how long. So that's, the HVAC has been continued to be a major expense, as you can see, just, you know, eleven thousand dollars in December of twenty two. I think we've got twenty seven thousand dollars into HVAC this, this fiscal year, which is only a few months in. And it's just dribs and drabs. I mean, one of the things I, I wanna look at, the roof was leaking and there's, you know, there was nail heads through the roof, you could see them, which is just, that's just not acceptable. So I am gonna see what I can do for recourse of, of who roofs the, the building. See if there's any way I can go back and get that taken care of, because we gooped it to stop it from leaking, but that's a short term fix, and it's a fifty year roof.
Yeah.
That's three years old.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
So, this is just, just to make you aware, because we may need to do fund transfers at some point. And like I said, again, the point where you just really need to see what I see. So if there's some suggestions on what we should do, and it's not just one, it's not just one thing, it's not just the HVAC, although that's a large portion of it. It's, it's, it's a little bit of that. It's the water system that, I don't know why a water filtration system didn't get put in in the beginning. We have since put one in. But a lot of the corrosion
Ah, so there's bad water coming in, so it's causing all kinds of damage.
Like a lot of the valves that we had to go in and replace. The fire suppression system, the jockey pump wasn't working, and then I think there was another repair to the fire suppression system, so that's in excess of ten thousand dollars.
Just short, that's just
There's some mortar that's falling out, there's trim that fell off. There's just a lot of little different things that are different subcontractors. So it's not just like one subcontractor did this and we need to go in and fix it. It's a little bit of this and a little bit of that. I don't know if it's a result of COVID build, because this was built during COVID, and the, the oversight might not have been all there. But it's pretty substantial, and I needed the selectmen just to look at it, so you know, I'm I'm authorizing these repairs as they come in because they have to be done.
Well, there's no choice, and I think, you know, we're learning a lot, and I'm hopeful, and I guess I'm gonna be optimistic in saying that some of these things are being noticed and being corrected, and then we shouldn't be as bad going forward. Right, I think, I think like one of the things was the, the HVAC system, there was, we learned that there was no upkeep being done on it, right? So part of these issues might have been corrected if we had someone in here checking on these systems earlier and more often, and now we're going to.
Right, we have maintenance agreements in place now for the HVAC, for the, for the sprinkler system, for the generator, for these things, so that the repairs, too, will be noticed before they're global, and, you know, we pump, you know, a bunch of stuff through the system that includes other things. But I just wanted you to be aware. So that you could see what I see.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's always, I'm, I love numbers, right? So, well, I don't love these numbers, but I love looking at numbers.
The numbers are going the other way. But, you know, I think you're doing the right thing, Debbie, making this plan in place. We, you know, we definitely need that. Utilizing warranties when we can, holding them to the fire when we can. It's only been three years, for those at home listening, and they go, in three years, it's costing us pretty much, you know, fleet of vehicles here.
I do wanna give a shout out to Carl because he's been amazing. He comes here, he really does troubleshoot for me, for the town. He's here, he's trying to figure it out, he's trying, he's, he's the one that went after the boiler. He's really working with the police department to get everything that he can get done. So Carl has been here, I don't know how many days a week, but he comes and really tries to get to the bottom of things and doesn't let them get it, get bigger and bigger. So he's really the one that's taking care of as much of this as he can.
All right, great. That'll be good.
Thank you, Carl.
All right, so I think signatures, and then we'll adjourn.
All right.
Oh, I'll give you some, don't worry.
Blue pen's fine. Just one, right? Thank you.
Have a good one, buddy.
These are all the licenses, that there's two tops of the apartment ones to sign.
All right, so there's chips.
Thank you.
Carl, you gonna be there tomorrow morning? For coffee and donuts, or?
Complaining, eight thirty?
Yeah. Yes, I'm just wondering, my head going, can I make cupcakes? Muffins?
She's ordering. It's our, the SRDA, who's there doing it, so I'm gonna have you some.
Sure. If I tell my wife now to make me cupcakes, she, she'll hurt me.
There's not gonna be a lot of people there. I think this is too early.
Let's ready to do some bingo.
Okay. Wizatz, I, I really butchered that. I did, I did put the Z first. I'm definitely just Yeah, I know, I was just, wasn't he, wasn't he great at reading today?
I told you guys before, that's like, especially with the art, a lot of your stuff is all the names you have to read off, I feel for you, man, that's
And I try to read them and like practicing, like
Sometimes. Debbie, you've never had one of these before, have you? A certificate of appointment?
She hangs them all on the wall.
That's our wallpaper.
All of them could fit on one sheet, she put them all.
Not me. Just one, right? Just one, right?
That's Jared's appointment, so.
That one's me?
Yeah.
All right, all right, so this one's.
We do that one. Check them off.
Yep.
Manager, oh, that was terrible, sorry. I'm gonna see what Carlos's appointments do to you. Oh, my goodness, I'm a train wreck, yeah. It's yours, so you're not gonna sign.
I did the same thing.
Yeah, all right. It's like, we know we're doing that. All right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.